Good evening and welcome to our meetings of April 14th, 2021. We have two items on our agenda this evening. The first is a special board of commissioners meeting, which is indeed special for this evening. And also then we have our building and planning committee. So we will not waste any time and we will get started. And I will call the order, our special board of commissioners meeting. I will ask everybody would be so kind as to rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the republic for which it stands, a nation, a God, individual with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you. And in our Zoom world, our roll call for this evening, I will note to that we have Commissioner Grimes is unable to to attend, may be able to get here a little bit later, as well as Commissioner Courtney, but otherwise all present and accounted for. And as we are required to do, we have a moment for a public comment for those who wish to comment on that, which is before us this evening, we only have one topic. And that is to consider for the appointment and assistance of a township manager. I do not see any members of the public looking to step forth and speak. But to our nominee for this position, Jeff Smith, don't get accustomed to that. So what I would like to do is to actually move for the confirmation of the appointment as a township assistant manager of Jeffrey A. Smith. And that he would be effective upon being determined in in May. And I would ask if there'd be a second to that motion to thank you, Vice President Gavron. And Manager McNeely, is there some comments you'd like to make? You are on mute.
Thank you, President Bernheim. Yes, a few comments. Tonight I nominate for your ratification Jeff Smith to serve as our assistant township manager. Jeff will be filling a position to be vacated by our own Bob Duncan, who unfortunately, but good for him, is leaving us for retirement on effect of May 7th. After over 40 years of dedicated service, I know we'll have more opportunity at our next, at our early May meeting to say more about Bob, but we'll certainly miss him. But we're very, very lucky here tonight to be able to appoint Jeff to this position. Jeff has 23 years of experience in local government, including 20 years as the borough manager in Media, Pennsylvania, a town which most of us are familiar with and has undergone a truly transformative Renaissance revitalization. It's a vibrant, thriving community with very attractive downtown and and very attractive residential districts as well. Jeff was instrumental in turning around media where we're bringing Jeff back from Florida, where he's working for a large county currently. And Jeff has also done some teaching in local government for 10 years at Widener University. So again, we're very happy to be able to nominate Jeff. It's been a long recruitment process that we started a while back, since Bob gave us plenty of notice on his pending retirement. We had a large number of applicants. We had a good number of very, very qualified applicants. But it is no doubt in my mind that Jeff ended up being our best candidate for the position. Therefore, my nomination of him for your ratification here tonight. Be glad to answer any questions and Jeff is here with us tonight. In case anybody has any, any questions for Jeff.
Thank you, Manager McNeely. Is there anybody who has questions for our manager or for Mr. Smith or would like to offer a comment? Yeah, Commissioner Zeloff, please.
Thanks, President Bernheim. As we heard from our manager, he hires, interviews and recommends for hire those directors, and in this case, the assistant and assistant township manager who would report to him. But prior to this meeting, all members of this board had an opportunity to ask Jeff Smith lots of questions and to essentially have a meet and greet with him since we were not part of the hiring process. And we would typically do that in person, but we did that by Zoom, as I said, right before this meeting. And appreciate the opportunity to do that. And I look forward to supporting Jeff Smith as he, as we, for this pending vote. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Zeloff. Anybody else? All right, then before we call the vote, I'll make a quick comment myself, if I may, because we have been apprised of this process as it has unfolded. And as our manager indicated, we not too surprisingly had a large pool of highly qualified people. And Mr. Smith is the one that has made it through with a recommendation for us to consider. The recommendation, I will note, not only comes from our manager, but from Mr. Duncan. And while we will have time to acknowledge Mr. Duncan at a later point, that that nod is about as serious to all of us for our consideration as as any other. And we will, at this point, unless somebody else wishes to make a comment, I will call the vote and would ask all those in favor to please raise your hand signaling aye. Any ayes? Seeing none, it is confirmed. And Jeff Smith, we certainly welcome you aboard and would like to give you an opportunity if you would like to say a few words.
Yes, thank you very much, President Bernheim. I would like to thank the board and Ernie for this opportunity. I'm looking forward to working with staff and the board to continue to provide quality services to township residents. And I'm looking forward, I hope to meet everyone in person soon. And I'm very excited to join the team. So thank you very much for the opportunity. And I look forward to meeting everyone in the community, hopefully in the near future. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith. Anything else from anyone else on this? All right, without any further comments, that will actually conclude the business for our special board of commissioners meeting. As I said, it is special. And once again, Jeff, welcome. We all look forward to working with you. I'm sure it'll be a great experience for all of us. That brings us to the next item on our agenda. And that is our building and planning committee and we'll acknowledge its co-chair, Commissioner Sinai.
Thank you, President Bernheim. We have nine items on tonight's agenda for the building committee, planning committee. So we will get started with item number one, which is authorization to release funds held in escrow. We have three items here. Do any of the commissioners, is anyone to wish to pull anything off of this list for discussion? Okay, so I need to move all three that we recommend to the board of commissioners, that they approve the release of funds held in escrow as improvement guarantees for 15 Kings Grant Drive in the amount of $16,489, 625 Montgomery Avenue in the amount of $126,379, and 601, 609, 615, and 620 Writers Ferry Road in the amount of $529,036. Do I have a second? Thank you, Vice President Gavron. Any discussion? Any public comment? Jody? Nope, seeing none. I'll call a question. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, that passes unanimously. We're on to agenda item number two, which is a waiver of township code regulating open containers during restaurant week for an event hosted by Ardmore Initiative on May 8th and May 15th. And so I'll enter this as a motion to keep things moving along. So I will move that we recommend to the board of commissioners that they approve a waiver of Township Code 111 Board dot two, as requested by Ardmore Initiative to permit patrons to possess open containers of alcoholic beverages in public rights away within a regulated area on May 8th and May 15th, 2021, between the hours of 5:00 PM and 8:00 PM, subject to providing the insurance certificate documenting adequate coverage as required by the township in compliance with COVID safety regulations. Do I have a second? Commissioner Durbin. So my notes say that Eric is here, Eric Person is here, if we have any questions. Eric, I don't know if you wanted to do a presentation, but you can say questions if you want.
I just quickly mentioned that this event, which is to encourage outdoor seating, that's why they're supplying a limited amount of seating and watching social distancing, but also sponsoring music to help people enjoy it. And I might add that no one is selling Ardmore Initiative or any purveyors selling the alcohol at the event. What they believe they're doing is encourage him to purchase it at the restaurants and then bring it to this venue in order to enjoy it.
Okay, thank you very much, Eric. Any commissioner questions or comments? All right, Jody, do we have any public comment? Okay, seeing then, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, that passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is the authorization to advertise a proposed ordinance, Chapter 92 Housing Property Maintenance, adopting the International Property Maintenance Code 2018. And before I put this into motion, I'll turn it to our current assistant manager, Bob Duncan, for his presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Sinai. This is an ordinance that we're asking the board to authorize that would adopt the 2018 Property Maintenance Code as a township's property maintenance and housing code. The township already enforces a series of the international codes that that are adopted under the Pennsylvania Uniform Construction Act. But because that act doesn't incorporate a property maintenance code, we have to adopt this separate from the other UCC codes. So we currently have the International Property Maintenance Code 2009 version in in place. And we're looking to update that to the 2018. Now, what we do is adopt that code and then incorporate a series of amendments to the code that are more local in nature that we think are important to have for Lower Merion Township. So what you'll see in the adopting ordinance is a series of amendments, many of those to Chapter One, which is really the administrative chapter, to provide for inspections, right of entry, violation notices, prosecution violation and penalties for violation. We have separate provisions for the closing of vacant structures, removal of structures and appeal process. And then the licensing requirement is something that we've had in place for many years, which requires all rental properties to be licensed with the township. And then our inspectors would inspect all of those rental properties to make sure they meet minimum housing standards. We also have a series of definitions we've added. And then as you move over to Section P of this ordinance, starting on 24 and going to on to page 25, is some amendments we have to the actual property maintenance provisions themselves. With the first is with respect to outdoor storage and residential areas, limiting it to one boat, trailer, camper top, RV type of vehicle on a property. Another section is for tree maintenance. It gives us the ability to order the removal of dead or defective trees when we come across those. And we do receive a lot of complaints about dead or dying trees. Another provision that is actually new that we've added is abandoned work sites to establish some standards that these these work sites be cleaned up if they, if construction ceases and they become abandoned. We also have under Section T, a new Section 308.2.3 regulating dumpsters. And then Section 310 is a brand new section that we've never had before. And it's a billboard inspection set of provisions. We now have probably close to a dozen or so billboards in the township, either through being there historically or being permitted along the expressway under our code. But we've never really had any inspection standard with respect to billboards. So this establishes a whole series of requirements, mandating the operator or owner of these billboards to have them inspected every couple of years through an engineer, provide an engineer's report to the township. And if there are any problems with structural or just condition of the billboard to require those to be repaired. One of our new inspectors really put this whole section together. I think he's done a very good job and I think it'll make sure that, you know, our billboards are maintained safely throughout the township going forward and guaranteeing that we're getting inspections every every couple of years or so. There is another new section under Section V of the ordinance on page 30. And this is amending Chapter Five of the Property Maintenance Code. And it relates to the four different subsections there are sewer utility vents and clean outs requiring that they be capped and properly secured. Also requiring a vacuum breaker for hose bibs to make sure that those hose bibs, you don't have any problems with backflow of contaminated water. Required sink strainers so that we don't have problems with debris getting into our sewer system. And then a backflow preventer standard, which is in accordance with the code. Now, the backflow preventer standard is a new one. Where we have problems, where we get flooding in basements that results in a backup as a result of the township's sanitary sewer system. We've had instances where we get repeat instances of that. And in some cases, there's insurance claims and insurance payouts. So one of the things we wanted to put in place here is that there is evidence of a backup as a result of that, that they put in a backflow preventer system so that we wouldn't have to worry about that again. So we might have an initial instance and an initial claim, but this would then kick in to trigger the backflow preventer installation that would make sure that that wouldn't happen again. So that's, that's an important component that we've talked about and we're actually wanting to incorporate into the code this year. Under Section W, Chapter Six, we have standards for minimum heat for all buildings in the township. One set of standards for an occupied residential building, another set of standards for a commercial or a nonoccupied building. Then under Section Eight, we have other structure provisions. Why we have receptacle standards, light switch standards. So again, most of these are already in our code. We're just bringing it forward as we update the code to the 2018. So with that quick summary, I can be happy to take any questions any board members may have.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. So Commissioner, questions or comments? Commissioner Churchill?
Thank you very much. Bob, how much would a backflow preventer cost?
The interesting thing is, we came forward in, prior to this year's budget, we were going to incorporate an incentive program where we would contribute to that cost, working through Divid, our insurance provider. We were talking about the incentive providing someone up to $750. And I think the total cost was in the 1,500 to 2,000 range. We didn't actually adopt that into our budget just because of the budget conditions coming into this year. But we may be bringing that forward again this year for next year's budget to create a better incentive for people to install that. But it's going to be, it could vary, but generally I think it's going to be in a 1,500 to 2,000 range.
Will it be mandatory to, in addition to that, or?
It will only be mandatory if there's been at least one instance where there's been a backflow of sewage into the basement of the home.
Going forward, well, the reason I'm asking is around Ernie's part of the neighborhood. I know that this has been a problem with probably about three or four houses recurring. So that's, I'm interested in that.
Yeah, and actually that neighborhood is what kind of what brought this to the forefront. And and the reason we're incorporating this in, because we do have a handful of houses where there have been multiple incidents. So that once this goes into effect, once it happens on one occasion, we would then order the backflow preventer so that it couldn't happen on a second occasion.
Okay, so this would be going forward. Past history doesn't count. Is that correct?
Correct. Now, we, you know, hopefully if we are able to establish an incentive program that would encourage those owners to do it, I'll rather wait for another incident.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Churchill. Any other commissioner questions or comments? Commissioner Zeloff?
Thanks, Commissioner Sinai. This is so important. And I think I want to point out that we do have a new codes enforcement officer in Ernest Pendleton. And, you know, we've relied a lot over the years on Bob Duncan to explain codes enforcement. And so, Bob, I'm glad you're getting this all cleaned up with just a few weeks to go. Bob, you and I talked about this earlier, but can you explain why the housing maintenance, this housing maintenance code does not include student provisions for student housing?
All of our student housing provisions are in our zoning code because they're tied to that land use. So the separation requirement, the added parking requirement, the minimum floor area, they're all in zoning codes. So there wasn't a need to incorporate anything specific to students in this code.
But since they're, those are by definition rental properties, all of these building maintenance provisions apply to those rental properties as they do to all rental properties.
Yes, they do.
I want to thank you and the inspector that you mentioned for creating a section on billboard inspections. Because in the course of the hearings in Bryn Mawr, Haverford Township, in which there is a challenge to billboards that have been proposed in Haverford Township, there has been testimony that billboards fail. And so having annual inspections or periodic inspections, I guess, is what's proposed, is very important. And while we're on that topic, that that hearing for billboards in Haverford Township affecting Lower Merion is not been decided and is still is still being, you know, considered by the judge. So that's still active. And then, Bob, can you comment? Are we, are we back to annual inspections of rental properties? And will this, once we adopt this new code, those inspections, of course, will include all of these new provisions? So it's a question and a statement, so.
The goal is for annual inspections, whether our housing officer is actually able to get to every rental property every year is, you know, doesn't always occur, but but that is our goal.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Zeloff. Any other commissioner questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to actually make a motion. So I'm going to move that we recommend to the board of commissioners to authorize the township secretary to advertise notice of intent to adopt an ordinance, amend the code of the township of Lower Merion, Chapter 92, entitled Housing Property Maintenance, to provide for the adoption of the International Property Maintenance Code 2018, including Appendix A, providing regulations for maintaining property demolition of structures, inspection of structures, light ventilation, space requirements for structures, periodic maintenance of billboards, providing penalties for violation of the code, providing for the inspection licensing of residential rental units, and providing for the regulation and permitting of certain dumpsters. Do I have a second? Commissioner Zeloff, thank you. Any public comment? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, that motion passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda, I think we're up to number four, is to authorize advertising a proposed ordinance, Chapter A180, Historic Resource Inventory, for 533 Maison Place in Bryn Mawr. And I'm going to turn for a presentation over to Greg Pritchard.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. And I do have some slides for this application, which I will display in just a second. Okay, so 533 Maison Place is, consists of a residence built in the 1970s and also in a historic carriage house and former carriage house. And this is the structure that would be the contributing element to this property if it were to be added to the inventory. Here's another aerial view looking west and the structure to the rear of the property right here is that carriage house. A little bit of history on it. This is a detail of the 1908 Main Line Atlas showing two estates, Hillcrest and Lyden. Those two estates were combined to make Maison Place around 1969. The arrow here points to the structure, which was the former stable or carriage house of the Lyden estate. Here is the subdivision plan for Maison Place from 1969, showing that is some existing structure would be retained on the property as a garage feature for the new house at 533. And here are some images showing the structure as it appears today. And now the Historical Commission determines that it was eligible for the inventory based on these two designation criteria, numbers one and two. And given that it is eligible for Class Two designation on the inventory. And they were particularly interested in this property because it is an historic carriage house. And in many cases, carriage houses and other ancillary buildings on large estates and other residential properties have been lost at a much higher degree than the main structures. So the fact that this carriage house remains while the main house of the estate was lost long ago is kind of unique. And they felt that the carriage house was worthy of designation and the protection that would come with it. So I would be happy to take any questions. Commissioner Durbin?
Okay, sorry. I was going to say, thank you, Greg. But before we turn to questions, I think I need to put this in as a motion, if that's okay. So I'm going to move that we recommend to the board of commissioners to authorize the township secretary to advertise a public hearing in notice of intent to adopt an ordinance to amend the code of Township Lower Merion, Chapter A180 Historic Resource Inventory, to add 533 Maison Place to the Historic Resource Inventory as a Class Two resource. Do I have a second? Commissioner Zeloff, whose word this is in, a second, thank you very much. So now let's turn to commissioner questions for Greg or any comments that people might have. Commissioner Durbin?
Yeah, my question is, can you explain to us why a Class Two and not a Class One?
Well, the, the criteria that are required for Class One listing, it would have to attain a higher degree of integrity. And the commission felt that it really definitely deserved the first two criteria, but the the higher level of designation, they did not feel that it was, for example, a significant work by a local architect or some of the other more specific criteria that are in that second category. So and also the integrity of the property of the building, since its context has been lost a bit with the the loss of its main house. The construction of the new house is close to it. And some of the the surface, the material changes to the building have impacted the integrity. But they still recognize that it's a survivor. It's unusual for a building like this to have survived, especially a new development being built around it. So they felt it was worthy of Class Two designation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Durbin. Uh, thank you, Commissioner Durbin. Commissioner Zaloff?
Thanks, Commissioner Sinai. Um, I do support this, um, but I want to make a few observations. Um, it is not visible from the public way, as you could see from the photo. Um, but more importantly, um, this property was, this uh building was used for short-term rentals in violation of our code. And so that is no longer occurring, um, but as you all know, one of the incentives available for what will become an accessory dwelling unit with a historic designation is ability to uh have uh the property rented out, uh ideally for um longer-term rentals. And so um in the event that the property owner pursues that through the conditional use process, uh, it will be important in this neighborhood uh that the rental um the right to rent is for a longer term and not for Airbnb-type short-term rentals, which is uh inappropriate in many places in the township and certainly in a neighborhood like this. Thank you.
Uh, thank you for that, Commissioner Zaloff. Uh, Commissioner Gavin?
Thank you, Commissioner Sinai. While while I think I know the answer, I just want to make sure this is 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 clear. Um, Greg, you you talked about the this carriage house being the contributing resource. What does that mean for the property as a whole and the protection on the property as a whole? Is it just this building that's protected? Because I know we've we've run into this issue in the past where it's a question over whether it's the entire property or just the the contributing resource.
Right, so the the property is what is go would would go on the inventory. But um the uh carriage house would be the only contributing element, meaning that uh changes to uh the main house, uh, which was built in the seventies, um, would uh um probably not have to be reviewed by the commission. If they were to, um, if the owner were to propose uh a large addition to that house, um, we might want the commission to review it uh to assess its potential impact on uh the carriage house building. But um the, you know, other minor changes uh probably would not require that kind of review.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Vice President Gavin. Any other Commissioner questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Jody, do we have any public comment? Okay, um, so we have a motion, it has been seconded, so I guess I will call the vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Um, so the next item on the agenda is for approval certificates of appropriateness. Uh, and we are going to try and do this the way that we do our escrow uh releases, which is we have uh items A through G, I'm sorry, A through H, um, and I'll ask in advance if anyone's going to want to pull any of these off. We got a a rather detailed uh set of slides and exhibits that I will, I will tell staff right now that I thought were terrific and very clear. Um, uh, but uh if anyone wants further discussion on these, um, please let me know now, otherwise I'm going to read them all in together. Okay, I don't see a mass uprising for that. So I I like to move that we recommend to the Board of Commissioners uh that they approve the following certificates of appropriateness as recommended by the Historical Architecture Review Board at their meeting held on April sixth, twenty twenty-one, uh, for three twenty-four Writers' Mill Road in Gladwin Historic District for solar panels on one roof slope. Three twenty-two Writers' Mill Road in the Gladwin Historic District to install a wood split rail and wire fence. For sixty-five Cricket Avenue, Suite one oh two in Ardmore Commercial Historic District to install a halo-lit channel letter sign uh on the facade of the Cricket Flats Building. For sixty-five Cricket Avenue, Suite one oh three, Ardmore Commercial Historic District to install another halo-lit channel letter side uh sign on the facade of the Cricket Flats Building. For nineteen West Lancaster Avenue, the Ardmore Commercial Historic District, to install new signage on the rear elevation, a blade sign on the alleyway facade and new pin-mounted lettering on top of a new substrate uh on the front facade. For nine fifty-three Youngsford Road, the old guardhouse in the Gladwin Historic District, to widen the main entrance doorway for wheelchair access. For seven East Lancaster Avenue, Ardmore Commercial Historic District, to install a total of six panel-style antennas in three separate sectors above the building rooftop. And for five seventy-eight Barrett Avenue, Haverford Station Historic District, to remove a brick retaining wall in the front yard, install a new driveway uh with a retention of the remaining section of the retaining wall and to be refacing it with fresh, with finished brick. Uh, do I have a second? Uh, Commissioner McCann? Um, so uh we have a motion and a second, uh, any Commissioner comments, which I guess should not be any? Um, okay, um, any public comment? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, that motion passes unanimously. So we are going to do the same approach with the two historical commission applications that we have as the next item on the agenda. Uh, so in advance, is any Commissioner going to want to discuss, have you a a lengthier discussion of these? Otherwise, I'll just read them in together. I, Vice President Gavin, which one do you want me to remove?
Uh, A, the fourteen fifteen Lanes End.
Okay, great, okay. So uh, any others? Okay, so I'm just going to take care of the second one first, and then we'll turn to the one that Vice President Gavin has mentioned. So uh, I am going to move that we recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of uh the applicant, following applications recommended by Historical Commission. Uh, eighty-three West Levering Mill Road, Bala Kimweed, to construct landscape features, including a low-stone wall around two sides of the resource and other paved outdoor spaces. Uh, do I have a second for that one part? Okay, Commissioner McCombe, thank you. Um, any comment on that one part? I seeing none. Jody, any any public comment on that one part? Okay, all those in favor of that one part, please raise your hand. Okay, opposed? Abstentions? Okay, uh, so then we will turn to Greg Pritchard for um you, uh, Commissioner Gavin, do you have questions or would you like to see a presentation? We have, we have Greg Pritchard here to answer questions or to.
Oh, I'd like to see the presentation. This is one that we had a lot of discussion on before and just see how it's been updated.
Okay, uh, Mr. Pritchard?
Okay, certainly. Yes, uh, we we do have some updates on this uh application. So um again, fourteen fifteen Lanes End in uh Villanova is the property. Um, the recommendation is um approval to amend previously presented garage and entrance door products with a subcommittee to review requested alternative entrance doors. And uh the subcommittee has been conferring with the applicant uh since uh this recommendation was made. Um, first of all, the garage doors, which were uh recommended for approval, uh, have been modified from what you had seen previously. Uh, they are uh now uh a wood product with a solid panel at the bottom of the doors instead of glass. Um, the upper panels um still have uh glass. And uh then uh the entry door, and this is something um that uh wasn't in your packets, but I updated the presentation with new information. Um, the uh the picture on the left shows um an original door uh from the um architect Walter Durham from nineteen forty-nine when the the house was built. Um, this was his original design for um another exterior door on the property. Um, the door, uh, the main door being replaced is a solid six-panel door with no windows. Um, but they took inspiration from this door found elsewhere on the property uh to design this uh four-light, four-panel door um which would be wood, and um they are proposing that. And uh the subcommittee has a couple of technical questions about it, but uh they um are hopeful and we are hopeful that uh they and uh the applicant will uh come to um a resolution on that shortly. So um that um is the update on that project.
Uh, thank you, uh, Greg. Um, Vice President Gavin, do you have questions or follow-up?
Yep, thank you, thank you, Commissioner Sinai. So Greg, on that, on the um entrance door, that certainly is much better than than what was there before. I and I'm glad to see that and happy to see the subcommittee's work. In terms of the garage door, um, I still, you know, I it it's also a huge improvement. Um, was curious what the HC's opinion was of of using glass on the garage door. Because clearly, I know there was an issue that this is a um secondary elevation. This is um something where the original, if I believe, there there were not garage doors. But it's clear that glass would not have been part of a design of garage doors. Um, I think it's certainly better with the wood. Um, so just wanted, wanted to hear a little bit more about the HC's opinion of of this.
Sure, um, well, they they felt that the addition of the solid panel on the bottom uh portion of the the doors was um a big improvement. And um uh while uh it it it's hard to to take influence from uh garage doors of the period, especially for a um a colonial revival um design like this, uh, where, which was inspired by um a time period where where there were no garage doors at all. Um, they um they felt that uh the, what was proposed um by the applicant, both in terms of materials and design was a a big improvement over um what they had previously seen.
Great, um, I have a a lot of faith in our, in our HC. It's a, it's a great group of uh of of um volunteer, so um I will support this and uh thank you for for the update and for uh to the applicant for for improving upon this design.
Uh, thank you, Vice President Gavin. Uh, any other Commissioner questions or comments? Okay, I'm going to then make a motion. Um, I move that we recommend to the Board of Commissioners uh that they approve uh an application for fourteen fifteen Lanes End Villanova uh which is Class One to install new wooden glass garage and entrance door products subject to review and approval of the entrance doors by a subcommittee of the Historical Commission. Drive a second. Vice President Gavin, thank you. Uh, any further Commissioner discussion? Uh, any public comment? And no public comment. Uh, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Okay, so the next two items on our agenda, uh, which are items uh seven and eight, both concern Penwin Elementary School. There's a conditional use plan and a tentative sketch plan. Uh, I imagine that we are doing these, we'll vote on them separately, but I imagine the presentation picks them together. Uh, and so for that, I will turn it over to our Director of Building and Planning, Chris Lesswing.
Thank you, Commissioner Sinai. Um, you are correct, we have two uh, two applications, both dealing with uh Penwin Elementary School. One is a tentative sketch approval, one is a conditional use plan. Um, so what I have up on the screen is just a a quick air photo to orient everybody to Penwin Elementary School, which is the smallest facility, uh, school facility in the uh school district's inventory. And just to orient you, uh, Haverford Road is off to the right. That's the main road that people drive by to the school. You see the monumental front of the school, and then there are two roads that shoot off into the neighborhood, Drayton Rain, Drayton and Suffolk. And then in the back is is Trent Road, back where the fields are. As you can see by the um, by the uh air photo, it's a large building, um, very limited parking onsite. It's developed organically with the neighborhood. Uh, there is, while there is limited parking onsite, there are um many of the, many of the teachers take advantage of on-street parking in the neighborhood um to come forward. Over the years, um, it's no surprise to anybody on this call, the school districts experienced an enrollment increase um and an expansion. This resulted in modular classrooms and also some very creative uh placemaking within the schools by the school district to accommodate all these numbers of of students that have come in. That's in, that's increased the enrollment on campus and also increased the number of teachers and staff that's been required to support all of the students who've come in. And this has happened over a twenty fifteen, twenty-year um period. The Penwin Civic Association brought this to the school district's attention and brought it to the township's attention that this increase hadn't really been captured by previous zoning approvals. And with that, the the school district went to the zoning hearing board, and it was determined that fifty spaces would be required to provide, to be provided to accommodate for that additional um, the additional growth that has happened over the last generation. With that, the zoning hearing board uh decided, determined to waive seventeen of those spaces. And then they required the remainder would need to be um installed by the, by the school district. So what you're coming forward tonight is to see a conditional use plan to install ten of those spaces. Um, and then to hold some of the other spaces in reserve uh going forward. And then also, the tentative sketch plan, in in addition, deals with the removal of existing modular classrooms and just replacement of the impervious surface of, that's currently occupied by those modular classrooms with some pathways and a um a large uh play area. So this is just a a site plan of the of the school, and over here is Haverford Avenue for everybody. This is the existing conditions. The gray areas are the existing parking. In order to um to provide additional parking, the school district will be putting in this pod of parking off of Drayton Lane. This is previously held in reserve, and this will have ten parking spaces, and it'll have accompanying stormwater management. And the school district plans on installing that this summer. But then there's still a balance of of parking spaces that need to be um, need to be accommodated for. And with this, the school district, um, as you can imagine, is, it's very difficult to put parking on the site. The site is is fairly well-used. It's a very small, very compact site. The areas in the back are used by fields. They have a different relationship to the neighborhood. Um, anything where you would be putting parking in many of these cases would be taking away from much-needed uh facilities that you need for education. So with this, there is an area in front of the school that said "view shed" that really defines the the property going along, along Haverford Road. And what the school district did was, after consultation with the Penwin Civic Association, this is something that I I will really give the school district credit and and the Penwin Civic Association credit for really coming together and determining what would be the best way to um to accommodate this future growth on this site. And it's somewhat of a compromise, and it was brought before the the hearing officer, and it all makes sense. And it was something that I think where we should really have a lot of our projects, where they boil up from the neighborhood and they work through staff, and then they work um to the commissioners. But what's proposed is a twenty-three-space parking lot here coming in off of Haverford Road. This would be held in reserve. This is the conditional use. Um, being in reserve, it'll, it it doesn't have to be built. It's just shown that is in the future, additional parking was determined to be needed. This is where that parking would go. One thing to take in mind is, while there are modular classrooms on site now, the school district is going forward and is well under construction with the new middle school out in Villanova. That middle school will will take a number of students from this campus. These ca, this is where this um, these students will will go to. There's going to be reorganization of of elementary schools and middle schools, and an entire grade will be taken off of the Penwin campus and taken out to Villanova. With that, that will reduce the number of staff and the number of students that are um at the school, and therefore that should reduce the parking demand. So when that new middle school comes in, that parking demand will be reduced, that need for reserved parking will just stay that. It can be reserved into the future, and then the um parking and the enrollment will be equalized. So what you're seeing tonight is, this is the conditional use request, is to install the parking here, it would have an access off of Haverford Road. And then there's the tentative sketch plan approval, is in addition to having this new um space that's put in for the reserve um that was previously approved reserved parking, that will be put in for his actual parking. There's a number of pathways that are going, that are proposed to be installed to complete the onsite pedestrian network. That's what's shown in these magenta lines here. Another part of this, um, and another part of this that's very important is you have the existing modular classrooms, which are in this part of the of the campus, and it's, when they were removed, the school district was proposing to build a um paved play area in the back of the school that'll be accessed, available for recess, available for lunch. And that would be exactly the same size of the um current modular classroom. Um, this project, while I'm I'm giving a very brief summary, it did have an awful lot of conversations at the zoning hearing board. Um, conversations offline between the school district and the civic association, conversations with the zoning officer, conversations with staff, um, and conversations with the historical commission. All of these things are reflected in the conditions that you have before you this evening. Um, for the most part, all of the conditions are acceptable to township and staff. But in reviewing them this afternoon, what we'd like to do is pose a couple of changes to both the condi- uh, the conditions of the conditional use decision and the tentative sketch. These are agreeable to both township and staff. These are really, I would say, in the realm of clarifications. The first of those changes is to the order that you have before you from the hearing officer for the conditional use. In that, she has um included seven can um recommended conditions. We would like to see condition three struck, and that condition um refers to that the applicant shall investigate consolidating the ten reserved spaces with. and that condition refers to that the applicant shall investigate consolidating the ten reserved spaces with the twenty-three reserved spaces and incorporating a loop along Havreford Road. Since the school district is already going forward with the construction of that ten-space pod off of Drayton Road, this is no longer relevant, and staff supports the removal. In the tentative sketch approval that you have before you, staff is recommending that Condition One be modified. There is Condition One, it's usually our standard condition, and it references all of the conditions in the Township Engineers Review Letter. We're asking that Comment B-15 be removed. This deals once again with that pod that's being installed, since it's already being installed, this condition is no longer necessary. Striking Condition Number Four, that the applicant shall investigate the ten reserved spaces. This is a carryover from the conditional use decision that we already recommended being removed. And then Condition Number Twenty-eight, that adequate maneuverability for PARS and delivery service vehicles that will access the park on Havreford and Drayton Road shall be documented. This has already been achieved as part of the plan review, and it's no longer necessary. With that, I'm happy to answer any of your questions. I'm here, the applicant's here. And that's the end of our presentation.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Before I turn over to Commissioner questions, I know we have a representative, I see Mr. Fromhold here. Mr. Fromhold, from the school district, we had a pretty thorough presentation from Chris. I want to give you the opportunity, if you want to add anything, if you felt it necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Sinai. I think Chris made a thorough presentation. I do want to thank all the members of staff and the Commissioner involvement, as well as the Civic Association. We several months ago started speaking in very carefully about this particular plan and the various aspects of the plan. And we had very productive and cooperative discussions with them. Much appreciated by the school district, and I think it has resulted in a good plan that we would ask you to approve. Tonight, all of the conditions are acceptable. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fromhold. Any Commissioner questions or comments? Commissioner Durbin?
I'm just full of questions tonight. Well, I'm looking at Condition Three, about shifting, investigating shifting the location of the proposed reserved parking north toward the intersection of Suffolk Lane and Havreford Road. Is there a reason why the school district had wanted this directly in front of the stairs and entrance to the building on Havreford Road, or why they thought it wouldn't work up toward Suffolk Lane and Havreford Road?
Chris, do you want to take that?
I'm just gonna, I'll just start off and I'll let Frank get into some of the details. This is a tight site, and what you don't see from the site plan that I was showing you is a grading, right? There is significant grading, and it actually, the placement of some of these driveways could trigger steep slope waivers, which I think we certainly want to avoid, and any sort of disturbance in natural features and trying to work around the trees. But I'm sure Mr. Fromhold has some additional comments he can provide.
I think that is a fair statement, Chris. You've got proximity of the entry driveway off of Havreford Road. But as Chris said, you've got those natural features, you have some slopes, you have trees in that area. It may be that we can nudge that a little bit closer to Suffolk, and that is a condition that we're going to take a hard look at.
Do we know what kind of trees they are?
Well, you've got the, let me say, without getting specific as to where a parking area might need to shift, you certainly have the very nice trees that are along Havreford Road, those street trees, which you're probably all familiar with.
I believe they are sweet gum trees.
Okay, I was wondering if they were ash or something else, but sweet grums, okay. And do we know what their life expectancy is?
I have no idea, but I will say this. We think we had it in a very comfortable location. Whether we can scooch it over some, that could be, and we are going to take a hard look at that at preliminary plan.
But in any event, this is going to be in reserve for the foreseeable future, correct?
Correct.
Do we know?
I think it's everyone's hope that this never
How long that is? Do we know how long that might be?
It depends on the children.
But we won't really know until after the new middle school is open. Is that correct?
Yes, and you know, over time, things change. And you know, where people move, where people with children move, that all factors in. And it's a constantly moving target for the school district.
All right, thank you. That answers my questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Durbin. I think I saw Commissioner Churchill. Mr. Churchill?
Thank you. I'm going to support this tonight. The changes that the staff have recommended, I still need to think through. So I'm just, that's my comment. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Churchill. Any other questions or comments for either Mr. Lesswing or Mr. Fromhold? Okay, seeing none. I think I will make a motion, and then we can go from there. So I'm going to, we're going to start with a conditional use plan. So I'm going to move that we recommend to the Board of Commissioners that they approve a conditional use application pursuant to zoning code section one fifty-five ninety-five dot one, to hold twenty-three parking spaces in reserve and a new parking lot between the school and Havreford Road with access onto Havreford Road. And that is with the removed condition of approval number three. Do I have a second? I see Commissioner Churchill seconding that, or is that a, hopefully that's a second. Okay, so before I go to public comment, Commissioner Churchill, I wanted to give you the opportunity. Are you still evaluating this conditional use? Or you're okay with this?
It won't be finished tonight.
Okay. Do we have any public comment? Okay, so we'll take public comment. And Jody, is this Paul, okay, so if you could just introduce yourself and say where you live before you start your comments?
Sure, good evening, everyone. My name is Paul Liebeskind. I live at fourteen thirty Remington Road in Wynwood. I'm both a neighbor of the Penwin Elementary School property that's being discussed and the current president of the Penwin Civic Association. And it seemed like we were on track to potentially vote to approve these, so I'll just be real brief and say that I echo Mr. Fromhold's comments, that we've had very productive conversations with the school district and township staff over the past several months. And we were pleased that the school district was able to make some slight tweaks to the previous plans to accommodate some of our concerns and suggestions regarding the elementary school. We, as a civic association, support the two applications before you tonight. And we believe that what's proposed adequately addresses, you know, current parking needs while planning for the future, which is somewhat unknown until the new middle school is built and the fifth grade is relocated. But there are other conditions of use that we had advocated for and are included in the full list, such as a traffic impact study to be conducted once the new middle school is built, and certain triggers for redoing that study, so to address some of the questions earlier about, you know, when, if at all, might the reserved parking be needed? Hopefully, we'll receive that information in the future, and then decisions can be made about whether to actually put in additional spots. But I just want to say thank you again to the school district for your assistance. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have it for the Civic Association or a direct neighbor.
Okay, thank you very much. Jody is Mr. Meyer, our next, okay, so Mr. Meyer, if you could mute yourself and introduce yourself and say where you live before your comments. Thank you.
I'm just bringing this up real quick. I'm a neighbor of Penwin Elementary School at two forty-seven Rockland Road. I've been there for twenty years, and my kids attended Penwin, and they all play in the park there. So we're familiar with it, and you know, I think, I just want to be very brief and just say, as a neighbor and somebody that's worked on this issue a lot with the civic, I think it's great everybody was able to come together and create something better than what was started with. And by having both parties, you know, support it, I think it's, we've got something that's good, it addresses some of the parking issues now with the ten spaces that are going to be built, and if it should be needed ever in the future, a good way to do it onsite. And I think a critical factor was the school was flexible to put the reserved parking on the front and keep it off the field. As I've said a couple times, it means, I think, the biggest thing with, you know, reason people moved to Lower Merion is amongst them are the schools and the green spaces. And so I think this tries to protect both reasonably well as a value. And the seventeen parking spaces waived, I think that was already covered, but I think that's reasonable, especially given that the middle school's going to come online soon. So we're thankful, and that's pretty much all I want to say, and supportive of it.
Okay, thank you very much. Jody, do we have any other further public comment? Who is it? Is it Ms. Schreiber?
Yes, hi.
Hi, if you have the opportunity to turn on your camera, that'd be great. I'm used to saying this in class, if you are not in a place where it's comfortable to turn on your camera, you don't have to. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I just, I wanted to just double check and clarify.
If you could introduce yourself, I think we all know who you are.
Tanya Schreiber. I live across the street from Penwin Elementary, and just quickly wanted to just confirm, one of the other great things that happened was we found some language that ensured that the porous pathways that are going to be used, while we went from the old code to the new code, that we would ensure that they would always either remain, that they would always remain porous pathways even through that transition. And so I wanted to thank everyone for the diligence and the thoughtfulness that went into that language for the transition. And I guess I just wanted to make sure that was part of the record as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Jody, do we have any other public comment? Is it Mrs. Weinstein?
Hi.
Okay, and if you have the opportunity to turn on your camera, that would be terrific. Otherwise, introduce yourself and say where you live, and I'd love to hear your comment.
Hi, Sharon Weinstein. I, three oh five Havreford Road in Penwin. I live across from Penwin Elementary. In the plans about the conditional use with the school district and the township, there was included a provision, the last time the Civic Association saw it, there was a provision that if the growth increased, the school population increased by ten percent after that initial study, within ninety days after the new middle school is built, that that would trigger another traffic and parking study to see if the reserved parking should be triggered. I don't see that in the agenda item. I don't know if I'm missing it, but I'm not seeing it there. And I think it's important, I think part of the provision was supposed to be that if they didn't conduct the subsequent studies, that they would be required to build the reserved parking. Am I missing that, Chris?
You are. It's actually in the tentative sketch conditions. It's condition of approval number thirteen.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, and thank you, Chris. Jody, do we have any further public comment? Okay, seeing none for that. Now we've had our public comment. Any further Commissioner comment or follow-up questions? Okay, I guess none, and I think I have made a motion, and I think it's been seconded. So I guess we will call this for vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so the conditional use passes unanimously. We move on to the tentative sketch plan. And so I'm just going to move this, and then we can have our discussion. I'm going to move that we recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of a tentative sketch plan dated February twenty-first, twenty twenty, showing the removal of the temporary modular classrooms, construction of a forty-four hundred square foot hard surface play area, and construction of porous pathways. And we have already done the conditional use approval for the twenty-three parking spaces as held in reserve. Do I have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Churchill. So we've already had a presentation on this. Chris, do you have anything that you need to add? Okay, any Commissioner questions or comments? Okay, Jody, I guess technically we need to go to public comment again. Is there additional public comment that has not already been made? Okay, so all those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, this also passes unanimously. So the last item on our building and planning agenda for this evening is a preliminary land development plan for six hundred North Eithen Avenue, Harerton High School in Rosemont. And again, I will turn this over to our Director of Building and Planning, Chris Lesswing.
Thank you again, Commissioner Sinai. So we're going from the smallest school to the largest school in Lower Merion Township. And we went out to Harerton High School out on Eithen Avenue. This is an air photo from several years ago while the baseball field was under construction. But you can really see the larger scale of this high school. The school is fronted along here on the bottom to the right, along Eithen Avenue, and it's really kind of a self-contained, almost world to itself out here with plenty of parking, large facilities, and several fields and tennis courts. What's being proposed, and this is, this project is coming in under the previous zoning. This is something that doesn't, the current zoning code doesn't apply to. This is all under the standards of the previous zoning code that was superseded back last February. But it's taken a while to work through the process. So the applicant is seeking construction of a three-story building addition, approximately five thousand square feet in the rear of the building. I have some images to show you this. This will contain six classrooms and four labs. This is real school building. Also, construction of twenty-nine surface parking spaces to be shown on the west lot as you're coming up, and twenty-two new parking spaces, and seven existing parking spaces. And that will be relocated elsewhere on the site. Installation of approximately thirty-six thousand square feet of additional concrete pads on the northwest corners of the existing building. This is kind of the back of the building where it goes back into the fields, making larger, somewhat gathering spaces with this concrete area. Of course, installation of stormwater management and construction of the pedestrian bridge over existing stormwater biofilters in the east parking lot. If anybody's been to Harerton, many of us have, the driveways actually and the parking areas contain these bioswales. And they take a lot of the water that comes off of those parking lots and then recharge them, and they have planting in them. What the school district has found over the years is that you need to get across them. And in one of the driveways, they needed to, parking areas, they needed to build an actual better bridge to provide connectivity, and that's what that bridge improvement is. So this is, once again, the existing conditions of the site, and the improvements are shown as such. So in the rear of the building, this is where the three-story, five thousand square foot expansion goes. This is going to contain the additional educational space, the classrooms and the labs. And this is really just shown, it's a logical addition to the building. It looks like it's always been there. Very well done. And then these are the additional parking spaces that are being proposed as ones coming up here. There is a lot of students and there's a lot of faculty here, so the spaces will actually be shown. And then the blue areas we have highlighted are also some of the stormwater management area. But there's also these concrete pad areas that are actually being installed as well in some of these areas and some sidewalks. And one of the things when we've had our discussion with the school district, we asked, you know, we're always looking from a staff standpoint, do you really need to pave that? Do you really need to have that impervious surface because it creates stormwater management, it costs money, and for a whole number of different reasons? And in our conversations, I think it was the township that asked the question, are you doing this because it's really functional? I mean, we understand, we understand the bridge, we understand the building. Are some of the other improvements made really because of the zoning change? That potentially to bank some existing impervious surface? And there's kind of a wink, wink, nod, nod, but yes. And with that, we're going to propose a condition that allows the applicant to preserve, not to build some of those, but to maintain their impervious surface. And I'll take you through those revised conditions, that if the school That if the, if the school district decides that some of these concrete pads in the back aren't necessary, they're existing green and they don't need to spend the, the expense, why build them? We understand that you have that impervious surface. No sense making that physical improvement to do that. And we've worked out a condition with the township solicitor, uh, that's agreeable to the school district towards that end. Um, so we're proposing the following condition, uh, uh, revisions to the conditions of approval. All of these have been run by the school district and I believe they're, um, acceptable to them. Um, since this project was, um, significantly expanded back in, um, early two thousand, two thousand and five, two thousand and six, um, the township has been looking to improve the overall pedestrian connectivity of the site. And, um, getting a better sidewalk along the front of the, of this institution is always been, is been one of our goals because we think it's very important. Not necessarily because it will connect to the larger sidewalk network. This is a very, um, not a very walkable part of the township. We admit that. But what you need is to complete the circulation on the site. Um, this is, as I mentioned earlier in my presentation, the largest facility in the school district's inventory. This is where, um, graduations takes place, back to school nights, um, when, when back to school nights happen, there is overflow parking that the campus can't um, maintain itself and people will park on the streets. Um, it's not an everyday occurrence, but it is an occurrence that will happen with predictability with graduations or back to school night. And when that happens, there are not pathways along the front. And what staff has been, is is pointed out and we said, well, sidewalk will go here because that's a logical extension of your path network. The initial air photos that I showed you show very pronounced sidewalk network here. This helps to complete that network. But we also understand the cost and some of the, um, challenges of putting in actual physical sidewalk. What we really have been pushing towards pedestrian connections. What we're proposing is in lieu of sidewalks being constructed along the frontage of the property, that the school district will install a five-foot-wide asphalt recreation, recreational pedestrian pathway along the frontage of the property. The pathway we shall be field located and installed in cooperation with the Director of Building and Planning. What this means is that traditionally a sidewalk is within the public right-of-way. Um, what this would allow is the, the pathway to be installed outside of the public right, right-of-way in some of the large green area in front of the, in front of the, um, school. It would still be relatively accessible to anybody parking out there in some of those areas. But it would, um, give some flexibility to work around poles, to work around existing trees, work around utilities. And it would also mean, uh, I think reinforce the rural character of this area. We've seen other similar sort of pathways installed, um, for instance, in other institutions. Waverly Heights comes to example. Those pathways were installed and they've been, um, very successful over the years. We're also recommending, um, the other following, uh, revisions that in addition to, um, our standard condition number eight, adding a sentence at the end that in accord, um, this is basically requiring that, um, signed and sealed lands, landscape plan be submitted and read by sealed by a landscape architect. And adding the phrase in accordance with the landscape plan prepared by Glack and Thomas Panzac dated oh one oh eight twenty one, last revised oh four oh eight twenty one. These revisions were made in response to, um, suggestions that were brought up at the planning commission. The school district was able to turn that around in the last 10 days. Staff has reviewed those revisions and they memorialize everything that was discussed at that meeting about improving some of the landscaping on the site. Um, and then also revising condition number fifteen, this is a bit of wordsmithing that changing that, um, I'm not going to read the entire condition, but something that should be developed to, shall be developed with a, um, with a post-development traffic monitoring program. With the changes to, um, to number, I have to go back to this. I'm and I apologize. It's not in my presentation. Um, there are a couple of conditions. I'll, I'll pull up the conditions. Uh, relating to condition number eight that are no longer necessary. I have to call this up on a separate screen, um, that can be deleted. And then finally, um, a new condition that any impervious surface shown to be installed on the group plan and not installed shall be permitted for use in future development. And this is way of just land banking that impervious surface. So it's not any unnecessary construction. So I'm happy to answer your questions. I'm going to toggle off of the shared screen so I can actually read the actual conditions and I'll reference those conditions that I believe also need to be removed.
Okay.
And I'm happy to answer any of your questions while I'm doing that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chris. I think the way that we'll, we'll have this, uh, run most expeditiously. Is there any, uh, commissioner questions? Um, we have Chris, uh, Mr. Fromhold has turned on his camera. Mr. Fromhold, if you feel the need to weigh in, why don't you just raise your hand and I'll call on you, um, in that way they'll run a little faster. Um, uh, Commissioner O'Neill.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Sinai. Uh, my question pertains to the, uh, revised condition for number five involving the pathway versus the sidewalk, which is a, I think a great alternative for the frontage there. My question really is, I wanted to make sure that in making this change and extending the, the asphalt wider than just between the two roadways up, that we're not going to be lifting the no parking, no stopping ordinance that's in place. That remains, correct?
Correct. There's, there is, that is not part of, of any of this.
Great. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner O'Neill. Uh, Vice President Gaffron.
Thank you, Commissioner Sinai. Chris, a couple of questions. First about, uh, follow up on the pathway, a couple of further questions. You mentioned that it can go outside of the right-of-way and, and onto the property itself. By doing that, does that impact the impervious, um, coverage on the property? Uh, you know, with you, you have the other concrete pads, but now you may be adding more impervious and going, would that go above the limits under the old code?
It may. That's why we're field locating it. It, this hasn't been engineered yet. There is an advantage that, um, the code that this is coming in under, uh, porous pathways, six feet in width and less are, don't count as impervious surface. So we're, we've been certainly from a staff standpoint, we've encouraged the school district to put in porous paving. They're going to look at their overall inventory of impervious surface and stormwater management to see if that's necessary. Um, however they do it, stormwater will be provided for it. And, um, it'll help to balance out, but there's a little bit of flexibility in there.
Okay. Do we need in the new condition that you added in, which I think makes sense, and I think it's wonderful that we wouldn't be requiring the, um, school district to put in concrete when it's not truly needed. Um, should that new condition though account for, uh, the potential of having additional impervious? If, if this turns out to be an impervious pathway and not a porous pathway, um, saying, you know, whatever's shown subject to the impervious limits at the time, you know, at the time of the application, do we need to, because my, my fear is if, okay.
Yeah, I, I see where you're going, but I think what we have to do is they only have so much impervious surface, their plans and, and on the plans, very clearly there is a maximum number of impervious surface. They can use that how they want with some of these other improvements, you know, perhaps they don't build some of those pads and they take from some of those and they put it towards here. Ultimately, every time we're reviewing this, even with a grading permit, we're looking to that maximum zoning number. It's not a way to get around that. It's just their allocation and they'll figure out the most effective way of doing it.
Gotcha. I just, I just wanted to make sure this didn't do anything that increased beyond that limit by, you know, we were conditioning to go above and beyond that limit.
No.
Um, the other, the other question I have about the, the pathway is, um, a property owner is required to shovel a sidewalk if it's snowing out and to maintain that sidewalk. Is that same requirement here on this, on this pathway? Or if it's snowing and it's not being used for an event, will it just stay covered with snow?
Um, I can't speak to how that they would operate it, but the, the township requirement is that sidewalks need to be um, shoveled, but pathways don't need to be. Now, ideally these, these sidewalks are really for those, those graduation ceremonies, which are usually in the spring. They're non-snowy events. Um, I don't know, I don't, at this time we have identified that that's going to be an issue.
Okay. But my, my fear is I know there's a potential of connecting this to one of the neighboring or both, you know, some of the neighboring neighborhoods, in which case this would become more than just used for special events. And then if that's the case, how do we require that it will be shoveled during the snow, um, for the residents if they are walking on that?
We could certainly add something that this became a de facto sidewalk and it, it, it's something of if it, and I'm just kind of, you know, off the top of my head, if at the time of a greater network is established of off-site connectivity, then the applicant, the applicant shall commit to, um, to, um, to shoveling them. I think that's something I'd, I'd want to discuss with the school district and maybe come back to you next week for revision to that, how we would accomplish that.
Okay. No, I'd, I'd appreciate that because I, I think there is something, if this does connect to off-site, that it shall be maintained as if, as if it is a sidewalk and, and I hope the applicant will, you know, will agree to, to the appropriate language for that.
I think we're also somewhat protected in that because the school district also has, um, PennDOT safe routes to school and anything that would be coming in would be part of that larger PennDOT safe routes to school. And I'm sure there's some other provisions. That's why I want to do a little bit of research on.
Okay. Thank you.
See if additional language is necessary. It may not.
Great. Okay. Thank you, Chris. The other.
And the only, the greater connectivity happens.
Yeah. Uh, hopeful, hopefully this will be an impetus to, to increase that connectivity. Um, the other, the other question was about the landscape plans. And I know during the, um, planning commission, there was talk about trees getting cut down and not replaced and using other trees to replace the trees that are getting cut down and not replaced. Can you, can you give us a little more detail on what's happening there and, and making sure that every tree that is getting cut down is, is being replaced?
This, yeah, this was something I was picked up by Holly Kaleo of our, of our planning staff, who's, you know, really forensic in her, her landscape reviews. And she had identified that some of these new improvements will, um, would necessitate the removal of some, some trees and shrubs that were previously approved as part of the old, um, the previous land development. That was code required. From a township standpoint, well, we wanted to make sure that was if you were taking something out that was required by the previous code, that you were maintaining that balance. Um, we had that discussion at the planning commission and then had a meeting, um, after the planning commission. And what the applicant was able to do in the last week was to provide a plan, which I, I apologize, I don't have that graphic in front of me, um, demonstrating that a one-to-one replacement. So there is no net loss of plants. If anything had to be removed for the parking lot or for some of those.
Okay. And is the buffer also maintained? Because I know that was a question that came up as well.
The buffer is actually being, um, supplemented. One of the things that we always do with an institutional property or any big property that has buffers is when they come back for landscape, uh, come back for land development, we review the buffer and we look for opportunities to supplement. And what we've done is we've identified a number of plants that could go in to freshen that buffer up. And the applicants agreed to adding those, but that, that plant material is part of this.
Wonderful. Great. Those are all my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice President Gavron. I'm, I'm going to use my prerogative to go at this point because I have a, a multi, uh, a path question is one of my questions as well. So I have two questions. Uh, Chris, my, my first question has to do with the path. Um, so when it's field located, uh, will the ends of it be field located into the right-of-way? So if there are ever sidewalks on the adjacent properties, it will connect and not just kind of like be discontinuous at those edge property edges?
So yesterday afternoon, um, or two days ago, Fred, um, Mr. Fromhold and Mr. Lil and I walked the site. We walked the entire site. And I think that is exactly what we agreed to, that we would provide, it would, it would need to flare at the ends to connect, to provide additional connection, or we would have an ability that that can, that logical connection could happen.
Okay. Thank you. Um, and my second question is, uh, about the, the last new condition of approval, which is the any impervious surface shown to be installed on the improved plan and not installed shall be permitted for use in a future development. Uh, is my read of that, is that that extends in perpetuity?
Yes, they're not losing by not in, by doing the township a favor, by not installing impervious surface. They're not biting the, they're not giving away their right to actually use that impervious surface. And I think we've, I think as a community, we've seen the school, you know, certainly the school district challenged by trying to find every square inch of their sites to be able to utilize for educational purposes. Um, so I, I that, that was really the intent of that.
Okay. So, so if I, if I understand this correctly, the counterfactual is that they would just sort of pave over anything to make it impervious. And then later they would just convert it. That, that would be what they would do if we did not give them this.
I think so. So if, if in addition, they need, in the future, they need to build classroom spaces, they would probably rip up some of these improvements and build the classrooms.
Okay. Um, so I, uh, Gil, hi. Um, so I have a question for our listener then because I just want to make sure. Uh, and I apologize for doing this in real time in a meeting. Um, I just saw this. So, so the, um, you know, Gil, I think if we were doing, um, and we lost your camera, Gil, um, I, I think if we were doing this, um, you know, with anyone filing a plan, right? You know, if someone filed a, a, a placement plan, it would only last for a few years, right? And then would kind of expire. Um, and here this kind of like grants the impervious in, in perpetuity. I just want to make sure that this isn't precedential, right? So if, if some commercial developer comes in the future and says, oh, you know, we, you know, we could build this, but we're not going to as long as you grant us the right to use all our old impervious in perpetuity. Um, would they have a claim that said, well, we did it this one time, we'd have to do it for them?
Well, if you were under the circumstance of there having been a change in the zoning code, so you have a change in the impervious requirements, um, it could be argued that it would be precedential. Um, and I raised that with, um, uh, with Chris, but the unique aspect of this case is that one, um, the zoning has changed and they are, uh, um, they have a development plan before the board that applies, uh, the law as it was in the old code. And that development plan calls for, uh, a certain amount of development to use up impervious surface and, and I don't think that they deny that that's the purpose of it. Uh, nevertheless, uh, it is lawful use of their property to put that pavement down. Um, so I felt that, that, uh, it was really a pretty unique set of circumstances here. Um, and, um, I, I was really kind of hesitant to say, yeah, this is really a great idea. But then I thought about it and I thought, you know, I think that, that there are such few circumstances where the precedent could be applied, uh, that it didn't in um, my ultimate judgment bother me.
Okay. Thank you.
Frankly, I also felt that, um, and, and I told this to Chris, you know, this is the school district that is here and what they're trying to do is to, uh, save what zoning rights they have in order to better serve, uh, the, uh, children of our residents. And so uh, I felt that, you know, for sure, uh, we ought to look at this with a, a view towards, um, um, extending the, um, the benefit to them if it was possible within the law. And it is possible within the law. Uh, and therefore I felt it was good.
Okay. Thank you, Gil. Uh, so I'm going to support this, you know, largely because I, I you fully support the objective, which is, you know, preserving the, the impervious, uh, you know, for, for the school district without requiring them to pave it over in the interim. That, that seems to be a, a silly thing. Uh, hopefully over the next week, uh, we will be able to get some comfort and maybe revise this a little bit so it, it doesn't you run the risk of having it, you know, go off in perpetuity or we can make it sort of very clearly tailored because it's for the public schools and there's a public interest in it. Uh, that, that makes it very specific here. Um, but we can, we can, you know, I can, I can hear back from you guys over the course of the week. Uh, thank, thank you. Um, any other commissioner, uh, Commissioner Courtney?
Thank you, Commissioner Sinai. I, I also have a question about the walking path. Uh, and I concur with Commissioners Sinai and Gavron that it's great to see a walking path versus concrete. Um, and I also recall that this was something proposed to increase the pedestrian connectivity around Arnold Field. So my question with regard to these walking paths is are they ADA compliant?
They could be. They have, we haven't got to the permit case. So they will have to, and I think that's also a good question. Joe's on, Joe's on the call. That'll be reviewed at, um, at the permit stage. The condition really just memorializes the requirement of it. Um, I will say just going into it, it is a very flat site in front and during the, the previous, um, approval back in two thousand and five, two thousand and six, the board, um, when they def, essentially deferred the sidewalk to a, to a later date, did require the installation of a green bench along the front of the school. So one of the reasons why it is so level and, and flush is because of that, um, that previous condition.
I, I guess if we were to require a sidewalk, they would have to install an ADA compliant sidewalk. And I'm wondering if they are also required to make this walkway ADA compliant.
I don't know if it's a requirement, but I, I do know that it's, there is a, a good possibility that it can meet all ADA standards. You know, as far as the width of the sidewalk being five feet or the sidewalk, I'm sorry, the pathway being, you know, four to five feet. And that they can provide the adequate curb cuts where it crosses the driveways. And given the, the topography, as Chris said, is relatively flat, I think the reality is that, that they can, they can meet the ADA standard for the site.
And would we have to add it to the condition in order for it to be required? I think due to the uncertainty that we're talking now, I think it would be belt and suspenders approach to do that.
Agreed.
So then I guess my question is now over to Mr. Fromhold, would, would that be acceptable?
Commissioner Courtney, we have not looked at. The driveway in an engineering sense to know what grades we're talking about and to know. Where exactly it would be rooted, I think we've got a pretty good idea generally based on the. The survey, the walk that Jim Lil, Chris Lesswing and I took. I think when we were discussing it, we were discussing it in terms that would not necessarily be ADA compliant. That it could be that there would be some aspect of that that would not be, I think the. The intention of course would be that the location and configuration of the walkway is such that it would be. Reasonably usable and accessible by, by those who would be using it, students, residents of the township. But that it would not necessarily meet ADA standards, so that would be a concern since we have not. Done the, the engineering and the, the topography. I, I don't know that we've taken any engineering shots of grades in that area, this is not. In the area where we would be doing any of the construction under the, the land development plan. Now, I can say if there were sidewalks there and they were necessarily ADA compliant. There would be a lot of grading that is affected there, there are a couple of areas, particularly. West of the west driveway where the, the grade does go up. And you would likely have situations where you had retaining walls adjacent to the sidewalk. Because you're pinched between the road and the, the basins, you've got surface basins there, Hariden. Large surface basins there on either side of the west driveway. And between the west driveway and the east driveway. So I guess that's a long winded way of saying that. We would not be comfortable with the condition that it be ADA compliant since we don't have the. The engineering information to be confident in that. Having said that, I don't disagree with Mr. Bastionardo's observation that it, for the most part, is relatively. Level along that frontage, but for that area that I mentioned, there are a couple of other. Areas where you may need to zig or zag a little bit. And I don't know how that would stack up against strict ADA regulations.
Is, is this something you can discuss with your client over the next week? And perhaps let us know whether that would be an acceptable condition?
I, I can certainly raise it and get back with our response, sure.
Thank you, Mr. Fromhold, thank you, Commissioner Sinai.
Thank you, Commissioner Courtney, Mr. O'Neill.
Thank you, Commissioner Sinai, and I just wanted to follow up on Commissioner Courtney's question regarding the ADA compliance. As I understand it, on porous paved or even not pathways, is that there are degrees. Of acceptability regarding ADA compliance, so that because it's not a sidewalk. I understand that there, we, we may have some flexibility there and still be compliant, so. I guess whenever we explore this further in the coming week, that we keep that in mind, that this is. You know, the purpose of this pathway is not to encourage people to park there, they're not allowed to park there. The space that path there is only for overflow. And if you're attending an event and require ADA accessibility, you're parking at the doors up on campus, so. I feel like that any person who requires additional assistance will never park there because they'll have access closer to the building, although. Your point is completely well made and I don't want to discourage it if, if the school district is willing and it doesn't cost. You know, fifteen thousand per landing, then of course we should do all we can to make it compliant. But because it's not a sidewalk, it's a path, I feel like this will trigger a more lenient ADA compliant regulation.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill. Commissioner Durbin, do you have a?
Yeah, I had, I had a couple of questions. I, I would just say that if it is a path, you know, and we can make it ADA compliant, you know, there are. Disabled people, people with disabilities who would like to be able to traverse paths just like the rest of us. But I'm sure we'll get an answer later. The other question I had was these concrete pads that they were going to. Do, but will forego in light of the negotiations, did they have any functional purpose?
If I can answer that, they do, and in fact, all of. We, we haven't used all the impervious surface that would be allowed to be used under the old code. So the paths and, and all of the areas where we have shown concrete have been identified as. Areas where it would be quite desirable by the school district to have hard surfaces. So.
For what purpose?
For, for gathering areas where students congregate and stand near and around fields and, and so forth. And areas where you have turf that is currently worn. That's often a way, as you've all heard, how institutions will defer the installation of walkways throughout the institution and see where the beaten. Trails are and where the grass is worn and say, okay, this is where we ought to be considering placing walkways. And I think that experience is one that the school district has had at Hariden, so that. If we were looking to preserve the last square foot of impervious surface, we, we could have done so by creating more areas that. Were not presently needed, but that's not the exercise that we've done, so. The, the, the fact that staff has come back with this condition offers an opportunity for the school district to look at any of these areas and. See whether it might defer, not put in, or see what the experience is. But at the present time, I think they were thinking all of these areas would go in, but we're certainly not adverse to the, the proposed condition.
Well, I, I appreciate that, I, I think, you know, just paving things for the purpose of. Keeping students from messing with the grass or something, it's not my, my first choice and I'm delighted that we could have this sort of. Reasonable negotiation that makes things work out and, and I'm also happy that we're looking at pervious pathways because I think. That's better for our environment anyway, so, thank you, I appreciate the answers.
Thank you, Commissioner Durbin, any other commissioner questions? Okay, so seeing them, before I open it to public comment, I'm just going to make the motion. So I will move that we recommend to the Board of Commissioners, they approve a preliminary land development plan. Dated January eighth, twenty twenty one, showing construction of, yeah, I don't think I've done this, construction of forty eight sixty five square feet classroom addition. In construction of twenty nine surface parking spaces, shown a new west lot. Which consists of twenty two new parking spaces, seven existing parking spaces relocated from elsewhere on the site. The plan also shows the installation of thirty six thousand three hundred ninety four square feet of additional concrete pads. And installation of stormwater management, do I have a second? Vice President Gavin, thank you. Okay, do we have public comment? Does he, anyone? Nope, okay. Any commissioner, I'm sorry, Chris, I, I guess I, the motion should include the. The edits to the conditions of approval as outlined by Chris and the additions of the new condition of approval and the deletions of the conditions of approval as outlined by Chris.
Correct, with the, also the addition of, of the removal of conditions ten, twelve and thirteen, which are no longer necessary because of the changes to condition number eight.
Right, and those are the ones about like the preservation of the, of the landscape material, right? Okay, thank you, sorry, did you have anything else to add or you were just going to remind me to put those in?
Absolutely, I was gonna.
Okay, thank you. Any commissioner comments? Okay, I guess we're ready to vote, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Abstentions? That motion passes unanimously and Mr. President, that concludes the business of the Building and Plan Committee.
Thank you.
Yeah, we can't hear you, Dan.
How about now? Got to fix my delay in turning off the mute button for it to work, but so thank you very much, Commissioner Sinai. Great, greatly appreciate that and also like to acknowledge the members of the school board and our staff. And also the civic association in connection with both the Pennwin and Hariden High School. And I, I know a lot of our, our commissioners have done a lot of work on that as well and I, I know Commissioner Churchill. His work in Pennwin has been going on and on and on. So I see he's ducked out of the, out of the screen for right now, so. And also our maiden voyage on our new format for certificates of appropriateness and historical commission applications. The ballots are in, it's a success, so, you know, good job with, with, with all of that. That unless anybody, excuse me. Anybody else has something they would like to bring up, would conclude the business for the board on April fourteen, twenty twenty one. Not seen anything, one, I will remind my colleagues of the request just to hang on for a couple of minutes afterwards. And with that, I thank everybody for their hard work this evening and have a good night, we are hereby adjourned.